Okay, we will call the EWEB meeting to order May 2nd. And we're going to start with an agenda check. If you have anything to change, modify it? No? Okay. Moving on, items from board members and general manager. Start with John Brofsky.
I met with the executive director of the Eugene Parks Foundation because they are developing a bunch in coordination with the city, a bunch of different parade parks for childrens specifically in North and West Chichey. And they are leading the EWEB participate in one of the charities for me in Santa Clara. They're not asking for funding, but they want to tell the story. They wanted some input how they can craft a story about water. So I've passed on this information to bring to connect to the executive director with whoever at EWEB would help with that, but it sounds like a super fun and exciting opportunity.
Yeah, a couple of things. I don't know who's in charge of it, but every once in a while when I drive by our fleet in our yard when it's not operational, I'm so impressed with the organization, how everything is lined up, everything's absolutely perfect. It's seeing what those guys go through every day. So if you could pass on my compliments and observations to whoever's on the fleet. And I think you're doing an excellent job of making sure that we have a presence that really looks professional. And I think it's really cool to have that image. Great story last night on KCI about our water quality, that we passed all the metrics, everything we test for, we didn't find. And even things we're testing for, we didn't find. So something about the mini plastics that we've been testing for 10 years, we had to found again. So that was really a good article. And then the last thing I just took for our city between liaison. I know that they're changing code and trying to encourage more electric vehicle parking, especially downtown. And I have my own opinion about how that's going to affect people downtown if they say only these and certain parking structure and things like that. I don't know if we're in that conversation about if we do that, and the only difference between regular car and any electric car is court. And that means they're going to be charging during the day. And are we going to, are we set up to do that? Or are we going to even want to be in that conversation? But it's coming. They've got a parking survey right now and about how you want code change and convenience and all of that. I think it would be a step we should have paid attention to. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it is a few months. I think that last work session maybe announced that we attended the Santa Clara Neighborhood Association. I didn't. I just wanted to thank Rod and Rachel for participating in that and doing a presentation. It was a really great event, talking to the neighbors. Attended two major customer luncheon. First one with more of a business community and then the second one with the nonprofit and governmental groups. I thought the staff did a fantastic job of setting it up. They were both really well attended and I think we got feedback from them, including that people really want to be engaged in the IRP and especially businesses. I think they'd want to have a partner, but maybe aren't entirely sure where that comes from. So I'm looking forward to the kind of figuring out when and how we, you know, bring those kind of groups in and that feedback. Participated last week in the Kid Win Challenge, which I see here. It was really fun. This is the first year I've gotten to do the interview process. I've done this like, I think, three or four times. And so this was a totally new experience. It was so great to see the kids and I'm glad that we participate in this and give them that experience and help with funding and such. Also toured the Corin substation, the site under development and appreciate staff and what they were able to like lay out the picture, had great diagrams to show what was going to go where and how. And, you know, we look at lots of board packets. So when those opportunities to really connect the dots, it was nice. And I hear I got the nice day because it was really rainy on the day. Anyway. And then attended the LCOG regular meeting. We had a report on LCOG services and it brought up for me that in the past, we've discussed having Brenda and our staff provide a briefing to EWEB commissioners on what LCOG does. There are so many different things I could not even list them. But if that was an interest at some point, I wanted to bring it up and see if folks wanted that. One had not maybe. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it's something that, you know, came to my attention and I'd bring it up. That is it for me. And Frank is on the line or Rod is standing in. I'm not sure who is either of you or.
I drew the lucky straw.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Rosa Carlson. As you can see, there was a number of items on the GM report. I picked out three of my favorites. So the first one I think bears discussing is the, it's kind of cool. But if you get a chance to go to the website, even right now, we implemented a language selection thing. And I tried Swahili and all kinds of different things. And then there's a lot, anyway, you could go to the website, select a language and our website now becomes multilingual. So I think that's pretty exciting. One of the other things to highlight is that we have implemented a shortened bill collection cycle. This was a conversation we began pre-COVID, probably some of you remember that. But basically, the idea is to create a shortened cycle and help customers pile up as much debt before they get, have to get reconnected. And it's making it clear for customers to understand how their cycle is going. So we anticipate some higher volumes perhaps as people adjust to that and move into the new routine. But overall, we expect to deliver customers. The other thing is that I'm really pleased about is the, we received a first place award in the 2023 Northwest Public Power Association Safety Event as it's pictured up there. This represents a whole lot of effort and work and focus from this organization. And just on a couple of days ago, we were notified that we won very similar to AWWA for first place. They can, there's a lot of utilities as well. So I think it just highlights the importance that we place as an organization on safety and how seriously employees take it. Because there's a lot of abilities that we're up against in the end. I think if we've done this multiple years in a row, you know, for both. Those are the highlights from my perspective.
Definitely some of the things that I noted. I'm glad that they got moved up to the front of the lineup because I was going to mention them in the wrap up. They're amazing, the award and the language piece specifically. I'm really excited to see that, especially as we're going into our DEI where I think that helps. So next up, we have correspondence. We're doing this slightly differently this time. We moved the correspondence from the end up to the beginning so that staff who typically have to wait the entire meeting maybe don't have to this time and can go home and enjoy time with their families. So the items, I have one item, otherwise does anybody else want to jump in? All right, well, I'll step in then. The annual reserve fund status, thank you for answering the question on that. And actually, the recommendation in the response that we received in the pre-meeting questions was also one of the things that I was going to bring up. So read my mind. Basically, there's a note in there in the reserves that call out specific projects. And I see in here that there's a recommendation to remove that. So I don't know if that's something we need to vote on in a later time or if we can leave it in for now. But I want to find out more about that recommendation if others agree that removing that language is what we should do. Looking at Frank, but I'm not sure if he.
Would you like me to chime in? So, so the thought with that was because as you had, as you had pointed out, one of those projects had recently been sold, that putting specific examples of the project maybe didn't make sense in a policy. So rather acknowledge that we are partners, but that we have separate entities. And if, and if you all are agreeable with that, when you get the red line copy as a consent item next month, if that's the way you'd like to see it, we would include that change to be less specific and just acknowledge that we have partnerships that are their own entities.
That was what struck for me. I'm like, one, I didn't think we had it anymore. And two, should we make this evergreen so that you don't have to update it when these things change? Do others agree with that? Okay, so looks like we have some head nods to bring them back in the calendar for next time. Right, looks like that's it then for correspondence.
There was no comments about the resiliency policy.
Oh, yes, there was a policy as part of that. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to bring up on the resiliency?
Good first step to make.
Yeah, I would dive into the resiliency policy. You know, I guess my, my thought is that there's a, some discussion in there about, you know, reporting on progress continually. And I'm curious what that report would look like. I feel like it's a step in the right direction for sure. I'm looking for kind of the concrete measures of how do we know if we're doing it? We're achieving progress towards, you know, resiliency, which I know is hard to measure sometimes. It can be very amorphous. But I would love to see the metrics of like, how, how do we plan to track that over time? I think it would help us think about particular places where we pay attention. And it might help us set goals in those particular metrics that I think would be useful for them.
I'm not sure you'd see as much in reported metrics. It'd be more like the guidance would be incorporating resiliency into a project. And so you'd get like a TBL, it would be part of the project review, those kind of things. So I don't know as we would plan on putting a lot of metrics in the policy itself, but we would work towards in the three different areas. Maybe there's work for services or something where there's particulars that could be reported on occasionally in the court. It would tie in, so.
So you're viewing it more as like a, like a lens, like the TBL of just the ways that we look at the projects and the decisions we're making.
Yeah, it's more of letting people to get pulled into their, to their work.
So we had direction on the annual reserve fund. Information, public agency, and more information. Right, then now we will move on from correspondence and head into public input. And I need to do the facility awareness briefing. Get to this. Thank you for attending this evening's board meeting. EWEB management and such matters, experts are here with us in the room and virtually. During tonight's presentations, remote presenters will appear on the screen. Please make sure to speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Guests are invited to sign up at the table at the back of the room if they wish to provide public testimony. Listener access is limited to the board meeting room and restrooms. Restrooms are located on the first floor through the exit and right hand door. This part of the room, across the hallway. And in case of an emergency such as a fire alarm, exits through the glass doors at the back of the room unless it is not safe to do so. The alternate emergency exit is located near the building just beyond the restrooms. During evacuation, follow staff's instructions and stay together for safety. Tonight's meeting will be recorded, it's currently being recorded. The meeting room will be muted during break. Aside from that period, virtual participants on the screen and public audience will be able to hear conversations in the room until the meeting is dismissed. For public inputs, when your name is called, please come forward and clearly state your name and optionally your address or ward. Your speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time by watching the timer at the front of the room or by listening for an audio notification when three minutes has elapsed. If you are participating by telephone, remember, okay, buddy participating by telephone, so move to the next. After all testimony is heard, each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy we do more engage in background with dialogue. Please note that the failure of commissioner to speak shall not be considered as supportive or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by speaker and the board does not provide an answer, EWEB staff member will contact the speaker for the question to be addressed at a later time. Okay, yeah, it looks like. Okay, wonderful. Well, we will call up Tana Shepherd then.
All right. Hey, people, it's me. Gochek, Heather Raisin, and I'm Tana Shepherd. Thanks for your continued support. Without the support, we would not be able to offer as many beautiful opportunities for our 4J students. It's been a pretty busy and successful year. We're pretty much back to normal, whatever that means. And we're, you know, able to serve more in our typical capacity, not as much virtual, a lot more in person. But the virtual component is everlasting and a lot of people are, I don't know. So there must be somebody that loves the videos because there are a lot of hits on the video still. So that's kind of surprising, especially the read aloud stories, which is kind of funny. So it's been great to be out teaching across the K-12. And it's definitely branching outside of science now. And I have a lot of different, all different grade levels reaching out for climate education aspects in particular, which is a really great development, which I was hoping for. Overall, I'm just going to give you some stats. So the salmon experience last fall, we served 62 classrooms with 3,234 students participating overall through second, second through 12th grade. And they had tanks in the classrooms, the whole thing. And then 38 classrooms with nearly 900 students provide the salmon watch trips. And the salmon were really happening this year. So it was, it was actually a really cool year. I've been working with the district to roll out the Love Food Not Waste program. So there's an education component. I'm especially focusing on the water and land use for food and what that means for food waste. And so we have implemented a K-12 food waste collection in all our schools across the district this year, and I've been helping with that. I've been working with a group of educators across the state called Oregon Educators for Climate Education. And we actually put forth a legislative bill this year, SBA 54, that is stalled currently. But we are, have been leading with Senator DeBrow and we're wanting to bring that back next fall, which really helps support the mission of this grant. Because I, when I was asked in the beginning, how are you going to reach all the kids? It's like, well, we've got to get some legislation. So, so that's students and teachers across the state are working on that. I'm continuing to do a lot of classroom visits at the elementary level with a special form that they're filling out. So lots of different folks are filling that out, lots of return people from salmon. And I don't have much time, but I'll get quick into this. So wind energy, I did support at the Bethel event. 4J does not necessarily participate in that event, but I do have a couple of teachers across the district doing that. And we had about 400 kids participating in 4J. We are revving up for the EV challenge. We've had to back out from having the big challenge. We just were not quite ready to bring that back. So it will be individual races in the sites and that was super successful last year. We have 18 teachers and almost 1,500 students participating this year in that. I'm continuing to support the climate justice team at the high school level with the four high schools. And yeah, they've been super active with some things that I can support and some things I do support, but I can't support, but I support. So, so that's kind of what's happening there. And then just overall, and I know my time's out, but I'm the only one, so I'm breaking the rules as I always do. Thank you for letting me do that. We installed about 100 refill stations prior to COVID. And I, we were only at that time able to afford one set of educational signage. So we're going to be adding that to all of the water fill stations, which is really beautiful. You may have seen it at Bethel, Bethel is using our signs also, so they didn't have to reinvent the wheel. And then I've been working just with leadership in the district, just trying to promote climate education and adaptation mitigation in particular. But really today, I let them know that we are wildly underprepared for the big one and we need to really be doing a little bit more with that, especially with educational materials going home to the families in order to develop. And then obviously the education components, which are coming up in fourth and eighth grade pretty regularly. And so, yeah, connecting with the safety folks and that to try to make sure that we're doing. Did participate in Shacler, but more than two drills a year would be really great and not with a fire drill, which is how we've always done it and they're actually listening. So that's really great. I'm continuing to update our websites and keep digital aspects of the program happening. And so just continuing to go with the flow and see what's happening. And yeah, and then drinking water week is coming up, so I put out some materials for teachers to utilize and then this month. Yeah, so things are rolling. So thank you again for the support. I appreciate it.
Much for the update. Really appreciate hearing directly from you and what you brought to.
And I'm sorry I haven't been, it's been kind of a while to write. And so I haven't come as often as usual. And so I apologize that it's been a couple of months.
Good work, thank you. Any comments with that, Scott? Okay, right, we will close the public input session and move on to. So I guess we put the Lieber decommissioning plan up along the other board items.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Lisa Kreis, Generation Manager. Standing me at the table tonight is Jeremy Simonyi, our Lieber Project Manager. And Mark Zunikar, our Generation Engineering Supervisor, is joined remotely. We're here to answer any questions you might have on the Lieber decommissioning action plan correspondence that was included in tonight's board packet. Essentially, this memo defines the action plan or the LDAP, the policy, and identifies the components that will ultimately. Right, hand it over to President Carlson to the question session. I wanted to highlight that we do recognize that there are many, many people who have specific questions and concerns around what will actually look like on the ground. And so we do recognize that. However, the LDAP is not designed to answer those questions. Rather, it's intended to identify the areas that can further clearing and study and to define the key milestones and decision points to get us there.
This was initially just in correspondence and so you and I were talking. I felt it was good to move it up, actually have a little bit of a discussion. Here's, since we're going to be going up river in two weeks. Didn't want it to be lost in correspondence like some things can. I appreciate the memo. And I guess the first thing that I would like to see out of it is timelines on specific things from the forest. So when we, when we decided to go this path, one of the things we said was we want to check, be able to check in and see if there's alternate, alternate paths that, you know, bringing back the full, full run of river with the territories and everything. So I guess my question would be, at what point do you think that the action plan will start to put some sort of timeframes in on some of these specific items that are in there?
Yeah, so we've scheduled the remainder of this year to fully develop the action plan. We are scheduled with the board for an agenda item on August session to provide some draft details of the plan. The specific milestones will tend to have some idea of that by August. But the plan itself that we are bringing to you in December will be detailed. The board milestones at places where the board will interact to either change direction is a key component of the action plan. So we'll have specifics related to that.
Thank you for this, the memo here and kind of the line of where you're headed. I can't believe how many state and federal agencies you have to work with. And thank you for doing that because I can only imagine how much work is involved.
Too big.
Yeah.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you also for the Lieber decommissioning that they used. Very straightforward. And I'm pretty sure at our meeting in a couple of weeks that people will have questions about a lot of those. And my comment about the action plan is just to be really clear when talking about the action plan. This is really a plan to create an action plan. Because I think that some people might think that there's already a action plan for decommissioning. And really, this is just like planning to plan for the plan to. Anyway, so just we all should make that really clear.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what you said because there's some elements up there that when we decide and when we decide it, it's going to start there, like your fish hatchery. You know, if we cut off their access to water, they're going to have to figure something out. And they can't just figure that out overnight. It's going to take years to do and the vitality of that whole here. So there's things, you know, the bridge and all these other things to deal with ODOT and everything else. And so the sooner we can tell them, when we think we can tell them, then so they can make plans. Because I don't think it'll change our plans, but what it'll do will allow them to adapt to it better. Because I don't want to wait till the bottom of the ninth to out and say, oh, by the way, fish hatchery, you have to have more water. Kenzie Valley deal with it. I want to make sure that they have plenty of time to know. And so the sooner we get going on that, because we're kind of just sitting here, we're going to do it. But it's, to me, it's the analogy, I want a piece of string, that we have to define this. So and I don't, hopefully, if we can give them some sense of that in two weeks. I don't know what we're going to be able to tell them, but you're going to be in front of the room.
Yes. And I am looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to answering whatever questions the public might have. And in particular, defining what we think we are able to actually accomplish this year. The LDAP will also be a set of essentially work plans or roadmaps for each of the components that were identified in the outline. They will be our best guess at this point, but it's something to work towards and will identify where there's interconnected pieces, where are the milestones? And you might need to do one thing before you can go to the next. That's what we intend to develop this year. There's a lot of steps and so we're going to, and there's a lot of interconnectedness. So we will do our best to, recognizing that how this rolls out really does impact a lot of people and a lot of agencies, Fish Hatchery is just one of many.
Thank you for being at the front of the room and answering questions that may be saying over. You know, we keep throwing out the 2030 is, I mean, we can say for sure that there will not be anything. Assumption, or is that also not?
I mean, shovels. Directly related to the decommissioning. I would bet a lot on that. That's only seven years from now and the amount of work that we need between now and then with both the planning phases and working with regulatory and other stakeholders is expected to take about 10 years. We did have an initial meeting with the FERC Division of Hydropower and Water Alliance a couple, about a month ago or so. And they confirmed that assumption that in their experience, that's, you know, a decade is the soonest we would probably see actual work on the ground towards decommissioning. Now, recognize that we will be doing work related to our near term risk reduction measures between now and then. So people will see activity up on the panel. But that is the immediate public safety component that we're doing now to ensure that we can adequately convey stone water between now and the time that it's definitely decommissioned.
And last question, are there, at some point, there's, are there toss around? Have we seen any grants or anything with this kind of workfalls?
Do keep seeing potential there. We do have some work to do in order to identify projects that are shovel ready or plant, or the pieces of the planning projects or initial studies that would actually qualify for those grants. Jeremy has done a lot of research on that. I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to add anything to that.
Sure, I think, you know, knowing now that we are looking to decommission, you know, there's a lot of dollars available from the environmental angle that we can be competitive for, you know, some of the late infrastructure components. We don't have enough plan development to really be competitive for those dollars, which aren't a whole lot for the whole country and they're going to dry up pretty soon. But I would never say never on that. But knowing our, our path, there will be some. But knowing our path, there will be some opportunity to partner with other agencies to, you know, give them some friendly dollars for fist passes, et cetera. We're looking pretty optimistic in that regard.
And just one more thing to add to that. We did actually have had some agencies contacting us, our regulatory agencies contacting us, wanting to partner, getting together with their backing for our projects for various grants. So we're hopeful.
Great, partnerships, good.
One last little thing. I don't know if any of you watched the lecture like a week and a half ago on what it takes to take down a dam in state. Watched that. I thought it was interesting. It touched on these topics. And so we can check to see if it's still online. But I thought it was interesting and talked about like federal dollars or kind of walked through the process, what makes a successful partnership with other work, like other entities. So anybody could be helpful if you have a question.
How long is it?
An hour.
A half hour at two speed. It is still online today. I would like to receive that email. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one other question and maybe something that I'd like to see as this plan gets flushed out is where along the way and are there decisions that are appealable? And where, you know, I mean, I've worked in land use. I know that land use decisions are appealable. And I'm just wondering if that can be something that's put in here that, okay, this approval by FERC is appealable and it's got a two year window to appeal it to the people. You know, just so we have some kind of an idea of monkey wrenches that can be thrown into these types of planning efforts. So that's something that if flushed out as this plan gets developed for later this fall, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and one note on that, there are many regulatory processes that have a built in component to them. And so we do plan to outline that in the plan.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we are moving on to the third action items. We have approval consent calendar A.
I move to approve consent calendar.
All those in favor, well, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All right, that's unanimous. All right, moving on to approval of consent calendar B.
The calendar B.
Yeah, can we take a look at 2309?
Okay. Would you?
No, we can pull. That's fine. Just dive into that.
One second, sorry. Did you have anything else to pull?
Yeah, IGA six.
Okay, so we have 2309 and IGA six. Is that, oh, that's 2310. Yeah, it's written differently.
Is that the annual price adjustment for joint use fees?
No, IGA six is the energy critical level rate for the city on wetland mitigation purchase.
Oh, got it. Yes, number six, got it up there. Thank you. Okay, all right, so.
We approve them.
Well, let's, can, would you mind amending your?
I'll move to adopt consent calendar I of B, absent the two items that have been pulled.
Okay. All right, is there a second? All right, thank you. All right, here we go. Okay, now, discussion on items pulled. Matt, you pulled the first one and then.
I made a motion, I think there needs to be a second.
A second.
Then we need to vote on it.
Oh, yes, sorry. All right, keep me on track here. All right, I'll say in favor of the motion on the table. Okay, all right, now, moving on to the first one that was pulled, which was resolution 2309.
Yeah, and I pulled that because I had questions about it because it feels like passing of $3 million or some amount of punctuation. Just, I don't know somehow it's hard for me to do that on consent without saying something. So because it feels really big. And I know we've had conversations about this before, so it's not a question. I just want to acknowledge the work that goes into this to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row because it's clear from this memo how much is involved in doing that. I just want to say thanks to the team for putting it together. I completely support it. Thank you.
Any other conversation? And we have, we did talk about this at the last one, which is. Okay, great. All right.
All together.
All together, okay. John, you want to talk about the other one?
Yeah, Karen, about when we bought that site, we dropped 400 grand off the price for wetland mitigation. And it was four acres, not 2.7. I'm wondering, are we mitigating all the wetlands or are we just doing part of the wetlands?
That's a good question. I'm going to call on Scott Milovich if he happens to know the answer to that. If not, we can give back to you.
If you could just get back to me on that because I know that we've learned, should have learned a lesson when we did this out here. And I just want to make sure we don't go down the wrong path on the wetland mitigation. And granted, right now, we're money ahead, but I just want to make sure that we're not going down there. So thank you very much. If you just get back to me, that'd be great.
Okay.
So I'll move to adopt IGA number six and consent calendar B and also.
What was your resolution, 22?
Resolution 2209. A second.
It's 23. I want to make sure that that was, okay. All those in favor, say aye. All right, thank you. I will try to adjust to the new cadence of things, having things in the different orders. Warm me off a little bit, but I'll get back into it. All right, so next up, we have the general business items. We have the City of Eugene liaison update, and that's John and I. Okay, well, you know, we had, it was primarily an update of the items that we had outlined in the previous two conversations that we had. I think one of the bigger ones that came out of it was a conversation around, actually, the item that John Brown brought up, which was working together more closely on getting more charging stations across the city. That seemed to have some interest there, but we'll keep on top of that and keep working with them. And as that develops, other thoughts, John?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was the mayor and Councilor Grove and Sarah and Frank and me and Sonia. One of the things that the mayor was interested in is our climate workbook that we're coming up with. She was interested in that and being able to utilize that to help maybe further some of the city's work on those same types of things. So that was something that she has some questions about. And I think Councilor Grove was pretty engaged in some of the things. Well, we'll just kind of have to keep leaning in. I think that we put out there that we're willing to, you know, we're willing partners in whatever we can, we can come together on. And at this point, I didn't really feel like they had anything on the table right now that matched with us, but that they're open to hearing that. I don't know, Frank, did you want to go ahead?
The other thing I would say, well, Frank is unmuting, is that, I mean, there was a general cohesion that staff are working very well together and that these conversations help, but a lot of it is happening between our staff and their staff, which is great that we have that good relationship.
Yeah, I think that there was some information sharing. We intentionally solicited support on things like College Hill, which we tried to give them some advanced notice that was, that was happening. We also thanked them for the support on our bonding work. And so, but, but no project from the standpoint of we went to them or they came to us for help on a, on a particular project. We also encouraged them to reach out on energy and water issues that we were available to counsel on different issues at their disposal. So I think that's the only thing that I would add to what President Carlson and Vice President Borowski mentioned.
They were happy with their new digs.
Get in there. All right, great, well, nothing else and no further questions. And we'll move on to the annual strategic plan review. Frank is up for that.
Yes, President Carlson. Commissioners, good evening. This is an annual opportunity that we take to kind of assess where we are strategically. Go ahead with the next slide, please. As you can see, this has been a living document. We're about halfway through the original plan, which was a 10 year, 2018 to 2028 plan. We've adopted and revised as we have gone along, as situations have changed. And commissioners along the way, different sets of commissioners have participated in those discussions and reviews. And we kind of nailed down the fact that this is a good time of year to do it before we get into the budgetary cycles and reviewing capital plans and long term financial plans and some of those things as well. So good opportunity to take a step back and look at it again. So next slide, please. So you can kind of see that where we are, we're really in the second phase of the strategic plan. We broke it into phases to try to identify some of the key elements that we were progressing through to ultimately get to a point where we were dealing on the electric side with the dynamics of supply and demand, which are changing significantly as markets and regulatory environments and customer expectations change. And then on both sides, the water side and the electric side, preparing for and dealing with the fact that we have a 24/7, 365 obligation that we have to be prepared to continue under a number of different threats and potential threats and potential disruptions. And so we're about halfway through. And in that process, as you go, you start to develop clarity around different pieces of the plan that you're involved with. And so next slide, please. So as we kind of took a step back and said, you know, where, where are we? We are in the mid game. This is about positioning different pieces of the organization. As we progressed through, there were a couple of areas that we felt like needed a little bit further definition. It's pretty natural that when you start out strategically, you start out a little bit more visionary. And as you're working through different elements of the plan, you start to develop some of the specifics, some of the programs and some of the more detailed actions that you need to be involved with in the near term. Near term can be anywhere from one to three years. And I think that what you're seeing here in the mid game around developing organizational resiliency pieces, a five year rate plan is something that we feel like is going to position the utility to offer new products and services. We started looking at resiliency specifically around some of the tools needed if the grid were to go down, for example, on the electric side. And then, next slide, please. And then looking at preparing for some of the pieces that would come as we start to put some of the new products toward things like demand response, distributed energy resources. Before you actually launch those plans, you need to develop the product plans and define those products and set up your systems to be able to price those and promote those and position those with your customer base. And so that starts to take place in the next few years as we pull some of the other pieces together, like finishing the AMI and the data handling piece of that, the EES, which is the customer system and the financial system. Those are all components that are already there. And then you start to pull these other pieces together that we, that we thought were, I guess, missing elements as we started to look at the things we need to do in the next few years. And then we incorporated DEI into the mid game. We know that there's further work on that. I think that was more an issue of aligning where we thought there were some specific actions and programs taking place. Typically, typically, you'd like your strategic plan to support that, the work that is taking time, especially at the highest levels of the organization and with its governance. And so that was where we incorporated that. And then the final piece was looking at some of the very specific contracts that are part of putting together strategic pieces. And there's a number of them, listed a few there just as examples. International Paper, University of Oregon's Sierra Pine, which is formerly Seneca. Those are components that, where we have contracts that are either in expiration or nearing expiration. And we need to view those contracts as strategic pieces, not just simply tactical contracts to extend. But how do those contracts weigh into our strategic objectives? And so to do that, we wanted to incorporate those in the plan themselves. Next slide, please. The values are just listed here. The only thing I'll say about the values is the, there's a couple here that may evolve over the next six to nine months as we incorporate different visions that the board has, in particular, around some of the DEI work. So this is, this is not to say these are recommended changes at this point, but this is a living document. And so we may need to revisit that and align the organizational values that the board is doing throughout this year. And we fully expect that to happen. And then finally, the last slide, please. We're, we are looking at having whatever discussion we need to have this evening. Then depending on the extent of the board's perspective of revisions, we could either bring back and have a consent calendar item in June or we could have a further discussion in June with a incorporated adopted revision in July or whichever month is appropriate for after that. So this was our assessment of strategic plan revisions that we thought were relevant for this time. And so we're proposing those to the board for consideration and would also be interested if the board has other pieces that they would like to incorporate. With that, just to, I'll see if Assistant General Manager Price has anything to add. I know it's a little bit remote, so I can't read the room, which is something I usually attempt to do. But Rod, if there's anything you would like to add before we open it up to Commissioner input and feedback, please go ahead and do that. Otherwise, I'll sit back and listen and answer questions as needed. Thank you, President Carlson.
Yeah, thanks, Frank. You hit all the highlights that I was going to hit.
Well, then we will open up a queue. John Banks is not seeing anybody. Just on 4.3 where it has, just like the one that we discussed earlier, having the listing of the contracts or specific customers. Well, I don't know that. If that's not all encompassing and also it just seems like you called them out specifically in the policy. That one personally. Just thoughts on that, too. Do you want to actually specifically list those in the review or just take out the examples?
President Carlson? Yeah, I was going to say, the only reason that those are listed is that they do cover sort of major strategic pieces. So when we talk about resiliency and we talk about major impacts to resource decisions, those are the reasons that those were listed. Only as examples, I can definitely support if you want to craft the language like it is, leaving the examples out. Those are, those are the ones that would be subject to that provision. We don't have to list those as examples. That's, that's perfectly great feedback. But that's the reason those were listed in the, in the text for this discussion is that they all have pretty heavy strategic pieces. And that's why Bonneville Power Administration is listed, for example, as well as, as a strategic part of. And that's why Bonneville Power Administration is listed, for example, as well as a strategic part of the strategic plan. But we don't have to list those.
And is it really only those three or when it says et cetera, are there others that fall into that category that need the modernization more?
Those are the ones that were top of mind. I think we'd have to give a little bit more thought to if there's others or not.
Well, if there's feedback on that or other things.
On that point, I support keeping those specific entities in just because this is a strategic plan. It has a finite ending. And so for me personally, reading a strategic plan, it's helpful to have as much specifics in there as possible or things that we can look back on and say like, oh yeah, what did we do with Sierra Pine or International Paper versus it kind of being more global, modernizing contracts? Because I'm sure there's plenty of contracts that need to be more liberalized ongoing, but these are ones that specifically we'll be focusing on.
I just have a couple of thoughts about both in the mid-game and the end game. Just thinking about our workforce. I know there are challenges there in terms of recruitment and retention. I think, I think everybody's facing this. I don't think this is E-Web's alone. But it feels like if we're looking for both flexibility and resilient delivery, that I think including something about the workforce and how, you know, the steps we might take to position ourselves better, I think that would be worth including if there's particular actions we have lined up. I suspect that maybe that's just something to include here. And then the other is that our, the focus on the resilient delivery, the 4.3, is largely on infrastructure. So again, I guess, you know, certainly looking at the workforce side, but also just the internal side, the steps that we take to make sure that we're prepared and agile when things go sideways. Again, I think that things we're already doing in terms of, you know, emergency preparedness and, and like practicing our, you know, emergency operations center operations and things like that. But it might be worth including some of those just because they're, they're important from my perspective in the.
Well, for me, whenever I look at a strategic plan and updating a strategic plan, I want to know what's fallen off. You know, what, what goals and things have we accomplished? I mean, this started in, well, the first slide said 2018, yeah. So I mean, obviously we had a strategic plan and we've hit some goals. We checked off a Lieber decision. We checked off building a reservoirs and some of those types of things. So for me, that's almost as important as what's going forward. To me, that shows progress, that we're making progress. So I don't know where that is unless I go back and look at the strategic plans from, from times, from years ago or the last time it was updated. So for me, if that could be something, I don't know if it needs to be in the strategic plan, but I think it could be an appendix saying, these are the things that have, that we have accomplished since the initial 2018 one. That's what I look for because a strategic plan to me is something that, like Frank said, it's a living document, right? Well, part of the living is accomplishing what we set out to do and being able to identify that and say, yes, this is what we accomplished in these last few years is something that I'd like to see. And I don't know where that would live, but it's something that I like to see when we're updating a strategic plan.
Rod, any? Just a comment on this particular topic that John Borowski raised.
Just kind of the way, hearing what you're saying, it's kind of Frank was pointing out. I think as clarity moves in, more detail goes into those areas. And I think about the changes and all the changes we've made, I can think about, attempt to back whether definition. Think the things really don't come off as much as they, but I like your idea about what's being accomplished.
At some point, I would like to see AMI off this strategic plan, right? So I mean, that's kind of what I see. In other organizations that I've been to, it's like, it's not as long of a strategic plan because it's not as complex of an organization. But it's like, okay, this, we're adding this one and this one came off, so we can focus on this now. And to me, that, that's been helpful in other organizations that I've been.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski, the one thing that I would, would point out, there's, there's different components, different, I'll say different types of components to a strategic plan. A lot of the Phase One work here was foundational and therefore things that you build upon. So when you think about, for example, customer confidence, a big piece of that was getting really strong budgetary controls and pricing controls, quite honestly, because we knew that that was, you know, our stewardship of customer money was incredibly important to building confidence. And so now, now that, that work is so foundational, it probably won't come off the list. There are other things that are more discreet. I think an AMI deployment is an example of that, which we will see over time sort of come and go in how it's viewed strategically. Once you accomplish something strategically, it tends to move into the, into the tactical continuation or sustainment mode. So you don't, you don't want to slide backwards, but you're no longer looking at those elements as breakthroughs for an organization. So there is some combination of both of those here, the foundational pieces that'll continue. And then as we go forward, you'll, you'll see some of the other elements fall off.
I'll just, a quick follow on to that triggered my memory there, Frank, which is the strategic plan in part is tactically implemented through our organizational goals. And those do, do, for AMI, keep falling off the list, right? So hopefully we've watched the plan, the strategic plan implemented through those organizational goals and change like our last quarter report was a good indicator of that.
Any other thoughts on the proposed language that's in there?
Yeah, I would just say I appreciate the proposed additions and support them completely. Thank you.
So it sounds like probably can bring this back as a consent calendar item then, as is all of my comments about the removal of the International Paper and WBO and such. So I didn't see whether there's support for that. So we'll just leave it as this and it sounds like we can bring it back for a consent calendar. Frank?
Yeah, I was going to say one thing that I do think is, is good feedback that we'll take a look at. And that's that when we think about some of the things that are stated in there, in particular in the Phase Two and Phase Three, we, I know internally, we do look at those beyond the infrastructure pieces, Commissioner McCray. How, I don't know if it's empirically stated that way, but what, you know, when we look at our resiliency policy, we are applying that to the, to the strategy. So, but I'll take a look to ensure that those particular resiliency pieces do look beyond the infrastructure into workforce, for example, supply chains, for example, and some of the other pieces that quite honestly are included in the resiliency policy. Financial resiliency is a part of that as well. So informational resiliency. So I'll, I think when we review it, we'll look beyond the infrastructure to your suggestion.
And when it comes back, maybe we'll get some data, a little back on what we've accomplished.
Yes, thank, thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we are well ahead of time. It is 6:30 and we have a break. How are we feeling? We like to keep moving along. Let's take a break now. All right. Okay, we're going to move forward then. So next up is the quarterly operating report for Q1.
Good evening, Commissioners and listeners. My name's Rod Price, the Assistant General Manager. With me is Karen Kelly, our Chief Operations Officer. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the quarterly report and then Karen's going to go into some details on our hard capital plan and. So the good news is we had a great year last year and success kind of continues to roll on through this year. We have a contract with almost nearly everything we're doing. I think the, it's so hard to even capture or do justice to this kind of conversation, all the work that happened. Hopefully, the quarterly report's capturing some of that. And I do want to just thank all the employees and all the support we get from the board. I think so much work that goes on and this is just a chance, I think, of reviewing and look at it and say, so thanks for everything we did to keep the water electricity flowing. There were a couple of things that jumped out at me in the quarterly report because as things go, nothing is perfect before. So areas to watch. This one was kind of interesting to me. So the chart that was actually in the quarterly reports, the line down there that showed the decreased slice generation output. And we were just talking about the strategic plan and the strategic plan talks about, Frank talks about this a lot, synchronizing load with, with our supply. And one of the things I found that was really interesting was about the lack of moisture, snowpack and whatnot in the Columbia Basin, which is, if you look at that map on the right-hand side of the slide there, those colors represent precipitation in river basins. That's over the last six months roughly. And so what you see there, yellow and orange are not necessarily good. Those are way below average. So that represents a lack of moisture in our hydro systems and therefore a lack of available generation to sell on the wholesale markets. And so even though we had a pretty cool wet spring down here, things are looking a little different there. And so again, going back, it really illustrates, I think, that the loads and the generation are both tied to climate. heavily influenced by, by weather. So, which is contrasting in some areas of the country that don't have that. So doables, all those kind of things. So anyway, that sort of just struck me as interesting. There's a more detailed explanation for the Commissioners on the ins and outs of the money and so forth. The other thing is something to keep an eye on is inflation and its cousin, supply chain. Commissioner Carlson noted that three years ago. And so those are impacting our, our short-term budgets for sure, hopefully not the long-term ones. But nonetheless, they are impacting budgets this year and projects. So a couple items. Few other areas to watch, compliance. You know, I think we've talked Lieber to death, but that's in some ways a compliance thing. But compliance, dam safety issues continue to plague the Arment Trail Bridge and some of the work that's going on up there with relicensing, for instance. Frank and I were just talking about the challenges of compliance also is not just the assets themselves, but the complexity of dealing with paperwork and the efforts and time it takes. And it's, of course, it's not, those efforts aren't shrinking, they're growing. And so one of the things that impacts that is availability of workforce. And so in a number of areas, including compliance, we were short on especially professional workforce to help us deal with some of these things. So I think the other area to watch and, and which I think has been apparent, we've been talking about aging systems, especially in electric, is its impacts on reliability. So got to go look at the current substation and what that was, for instance. But a number of areas that we need to reinvest in the system. Can we do it fast enough? So that's a good question that I'm going to turn it over to Karen to, to answer.
Not quite sure. I'm going to answer that question exactly.
I didn't set you up very good.
But I did want to start off talking about capital, whet your appetite for it because tonight we're going to talk about what's happening with capital right now currently. Next month, you're going to hear from Rod and Frank about assumptions and constrictions that we have on capital planning for 2024 and that next 10-year plan. And then in July, we'll come to you with some requests for funding along with Dan on long-term financial plan. So for right now, I want to thank Tyler Nice, who's in the back of the room, as my support tonight, helped provide these slides. And then Wally McCullough is online as well, supporting with the more information. So they can answer the detailed questions that you may have and I'm going to go over the general stuff. So just briefly, wanted to give an overview about what goes on with capital planning. As you know, we are stewards of our community's $1.3 billion worth of assets and we have to maintain them, rehabilitate or replace them. So through that, we have much to consider and you can see just a few of those considerations here on this slide. But even as we plan and execute, many factors can bump our plans off track. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight. Starting out, this is Q1 report and it's early in the year before our full-blown construction season begins. And we continue to experience some challenges and uncertainty with staffing, costs, bids, supply chain, et cetera. So I'm going to try to point out some of those challenges throughout this presentation. And we'll discuss some of the mitigation measures that we are taking. Just as a reminder, we have two ways to categorize our capital projects. We have type one, two, and three. You can see here on the screen, you've seen that before and in our reporting. And that's really the, what are we doing and what's it going to cost? And the other way to categorize is really about the why are we doing it? So compulsory, the risk-based and the strategic pieces to that. And we'll talk about both. So first off, starting out with water, our 2023 spending, we are, through Q1, we have spent 8.6 million, which is 27% of the budget. We are predicting at year end to be over at 115% spent. And some of the primary reasons for that include our Hilliard Street Transmission Main Project came in higher than anticipated because of material and construction costs. And that is a two-year project. We also have higher costs for our E-Web Enterprise Solutions project, which you've heard a lot about as well. Modernizing our computer systems, that's not exactly an overage, but it is moving money forward in the plan versus spreading it out over time. So pre-funding some of that work that has projected to set our budget off a little bit there. And then also on our Riverfront Transmission Main Project, closing that work out, which I will talk about in another slide. But overall for water, the 10-year CIP is about the same as last year at 340 million. We continue to focus on strengthening the resilient spine and we do have some minor schedule updates to that. This could change based on our master planning, which is coming up, working on that this year, finalizing next year. And it could also change based on what happens with our Bertelson permitting that Bertelson project costs that we are working on right now. Heard about earlier. So with water, we have compulsory and risk-based projects at our Hayden Bridge plant and also within transmission and distribution. And this slide outlines some of those. So our filtered water pump station, variable frequency drive replacement work and skater replacement, taking three disparate skater systems and modernizing that into one is happening right now. We also continue to have emergent work, as does electric side and customer-driven service work that hits on this. We have transmission work that's happening as well. And I'm going to see if I can show you here, finishing the Hilliard work and also beginning with the Riverfront Phase project. This is Phase Three. This is Riverfront coming down here, main replacement, transmission main replacement. This is Riverfront coming down here, main replacement, transmission main replacement, and going down Bullard. So that project is happening and that is part of our resilient spine work. We continue to increase main replacement investment that does directly tie to our resiliency. And that can be thrown off track or bumped up in priority based on city work, city street projects. And so that becomes compulsory for us and we have to coordinate with city work that's happening. And of course, we have AMI deployment, which we were talking about earlier. Then yes, we all would like to finish that project and get that one off the list and it has been hindered by our supply chain, though in water, we do continue deployment. I just wanted to mention too, the contractors are also having a hard time finding people as are we. Their costs are going up. We aren't getting as many bids as we used to. So that is one of our constraints. Moving on with water and additional compulsory work and risk-based work, we are working very well and having continued success on our East 40th Reservoir Sites. That project is our largest project in water and it is on schedule and on budget. So we're pretty pleased about that. That is putting us in line to take our College Hill Reservoir offline by the end of this year as required by the Oregon Health Authority. And then construction on that tank, or I should say those tanks, demolishing and rebuilding at that site will begin in 2024 and last for a few years. Also included are pump stations, Highland Drive and our upper-level storage projects. And we did approve a consent item tonight for our Shasta 975 reservoirs that need replaced as well. So the work is never-ending. A lot of work happening. And then future work at Hawkins and Santa Clara is under evaluation as well, based on what happens with the outcome of the master plan and what we can do with, once we get College Hill online, what can we take off and work on next. So more to come. And then finally, on the strategic end for water, we have our second drinking water treatment plant project that is happening. I think you're pretty well-versed in what's happening there. Had another meeting today with the City of Springfield, your land use approval process and working on land use development code amendments. So that work is ongoing as well as permitting for in-water work on our intake. And we're working with consultants on that, trying to get everything in line. That is a very lengthy process for us. So at the same time, we're taking a look at our preliminary designs for that intake and doing some value engineering on that to make sure we stay on track with our schedule. What's not shown here is emergency water stations. And I want to point out that President Carlson did ask a good question about the status of those that's in your Q and A, in your board packet, and encourage you to take a look at that. We are intending to wrap up those projects this year. So we are on track with that. Moving on to electric, our spending outlook here for type one, two, and three, at the end of Q1, we are 14% spent at 10.5 million. At the end of the year, right now, we're projecting a 95% spend. So with that comes a bit of an overage for type one and two. We're projecting 110% of budget, with type three projected at 69% of budget. There's a lot of uncertainty that goes on with these projects as well, some of which we've already talked about. But this being early in the season, that is why you're seeing a bit of a lower spend amount and that will ramp up with construction season. There's a few things in your board packet I wanted to point out. So underground cable replacement, we're planning on initiation of field work for that, but it's depending on internal staffing and continued availability of the cable pulling equipment. So some constraints possibly there. Distribution transformers, right now, we have projected our spending on 2022, but early 2023 pricing and availability shows this market is still volatile. So, you know, we may see challenges on that. And then current rebuild, construction's ongoing and we're making planned progress. However, our switchgear has experienced a delay due to manufacturing, which may push some of that spending into early 2024. So things may continue to change there. So talking about on the electric side, our compulsory work, this is our emergent work from equipment failures. One of those was the Westmoreland Substation Regulator Replacement. That work is complete. We are working on in progress right now Hayden Bridge Substation Breaker and Relay Replacement. Our River Road Substation Transformer Replacements Plan for Q3. And we have ongoing customer-driven work, which has been hindered by staff turnover. And there is a bit of stress behind that in trying to meet customer demands, customer, our desire to be good stewards and responsive to our customers. So we'll talk about that here at the end of this presentation a little more. For risk-based work, we have talked about the current substation and I just wanted to mention, there's a kind of a nice tagline out there now about our 10 substations rebuilt 10-years' goal. But that too is, has a lot of contingencies on it. And, you know, it's pretty catchy, I think. I like the idea of it, but we're ramping up for that now. But some of that work is also dependent on staffing and you have some staff turnover in that electric engineering group as well. So more to come. We are working on the Thurston Transmission Tab rebuild, our downtown network vault rebuilds. And then we mentioned earlier, I think Rod mentioned, our Carmen Generator Rewind Project, which is in progress. And that too has been hindered by problems with some manufacturing defective parts that has caused us to get in some serious conversations about contracts with our contractor on that. And that has resulted in a number of delays as well. We are hoping for that first unit to be commissioned by the end of August, but it has not been without its challenges. On the strategic side, we are prepping for future loads. Our Bertelson Substation reconfiguring, projects underway. We are still working at planning on AMI deployment. Latest that I've heard is meters coming in November. We'll believe it when we see it and we have something a little more firm, but ramping up, planning for that is happening now through Q3. Hopefully, they come in Q4 and we begin deployment again in January. There is work happening with transformer seismic anchoring. That's an ongoing program, will be for some time. And then I will say, it's never too much to talk about Lieberg. I don't think we can ever talk it to death. There's so much detail there. So of course, we're planning, as you heard earlier, about the Lieberg Decommissioning Action Plan, lots of interest there. Last but not least, we have shared services projects. You have heard about the E-Web EES program kicking off and more is happening there. We've also talked about the Bertelson Operations Center, again, design and permitting and our mitigation credits. We'll get back to you on that, Commissioner Brown. I wanted to mention Headquarters Fourth Floor Network move. That was a really, really big project that took many staff, many hours to get our network out of that fourth floor, which just happened here very recently. So I want to thank staff for that, a lot of planning, couple of years worth of planning and execution. And then ongoing fleet procurements, which you also saw in tonight's consent items. And just for information, the split here is 76% on electric and 24% on water in terms of the cost share for that. One more slide, that is going back to our capital plan, risks and mitigation. So we talked a lot about the challenges in staffing and in supply chain, but none of those are new. We've been talking about them for several years now. But I did want to highlight some of the wins that we've had, which we do believe we've had some recruiting success on the IBW now that we've got the new collective bargaining agreement in place. We have seen some good recruits there. I think that has, is a result of that work. There's been an increase in advertising and targeted communications. A few of us are out literally shaking the trees, getting some candidates to apply for some of these specialized positions and some arm twisting. And then we do continue to focus on those entry-level landing spots for people to get in here and then trying to develop them, probably as they move forward in their careers. On the supply chain side, the good news is we are leveraging cooperative contracts as best we can. We have had increased communications around bids and upcoming work, shaking the trees literally on those projects, trying to get people to come out and bid on them. And then even going as far as looking at new standards and designs as a way to creatively address the situation and procure different equipment that might be available. AMI is an example. We have a few and others in electric and water both that we've had differing success on so far, but we are trying some new things to try and get around the supply chain issues. So with that, I will open it up to questions for Rod and I and others.
I have a question about AMI and I can't, I can't remember where we should have been at this point if there hadn't been chain issues. But my question is, how does the slowdown of the AMI affect our five-year rate design that we're going to be talking about in the next year and interview service? Because my understanding is that we should have been further along with AMI and maybe talking about like a second generation of AMI eventually that would be able to handle more complicated things. So how does all that go together?
Short answer is, I'm sure it impacts it because we're missing information and knowledge, right? I think another twisted complication in it is the previous D I S replacement project. So now we're moving into the E S kind of program, which, so we're probably a couple of years away from being able to, the leaders provide the inputs, put the backend, it all together. Part of, I guess, evolving. So yeah, it's not a place where we want to be, but I think we still have a lot of leeway on second generation, like.
Depending on the water shortage of the Columbia Basin, it's what, 70% of normal plus or minus. And so that really affects our contribution margin and things such as that. So if wholesale prices don't stay as strong as they are now, then that's what's saving aside, is my understanding, what happens? Because they're pretty volatile, I mean, extremely volatile. And what happens to this budget and these plans and things if we lose that support we're getting off of wholesale?
Short answer, Frank want to answer that? Okay. I thought we thought, I'll leave the short answer because Dan talked about reserve transfers earlier, correspondence. Go ahead.
Yeah, President Brown, it's actually a good question that we start to, when we look at risk on the wholesale side, that's one of the things we look at when we're targeting reserves and the different scenarios. Now, there's a few things that actually, low water generally drives demand, which then drives up prices. So there's a little bit of a linkage between the fact that under low water conditions, you can have higher prices. And so it is natural that you might expect to see, when you're having restrictions on the supply side, that you would have strong prices. And that's kind of a supply and demand piece. We're also continuing to see high natural gas prices, which drives in many ways the marginal price on the wholesale market. So at least this year, the projection is that strong prices will continue. And we, because we trade out into the future, we are seeing strong prices into the future, which is, which is supports that conclusion. If for some reason there was a disconnect between the economic logic that I just described, we do budget very conservatively. As you know, our contribution margin risk factor does take prices and water into account. And so, but we've, we've never had to tap into the power reserve, but it is there. But right now, it looks like the, the basics of economics is supporting that prices will remain at a high level throughout this low water period.
Thank you. My second part, my question is that, I know we're at your challenge right now because my ears ring about once a week about how long it takes E-Web to do something for private sector, as you know. And that's given this, so we undertake the largest construction project in E-Web's history and we're strapped with limited number of technical experts and expertise. What's it going to give? Is our project going to give or is the private sector going to give and wait? Because right now, they're waiting. And if it exacerbates it, because we have all our staff working on Lieberg, what are we going to do? How are we going to, how are we going to address people that want to do economic development?
I understand your question, what you're talking about is connections in building?
Yeah. Kind of like that example on High Street that we have, that where it's going to take two or three months just to tell us what we need to do.
Yeah, in general, those are different, interesting planning staffs. Not that we're not short on both, but economic development, top priority is connecting customers. So after that, then it's a challenge to get people cleaned up and processes, look at that and some of these things. And so Karen and Tyler are leaving some efforts into pricing that situation, exactly. Thank you.
Just to add too, on that end, that compliance is also a concern for us with that staffing on service requests. That's the same group who's dealing with PUC compliance, that's dealing with our customer-driven work. So we are trying to take a look at that pretty closely and prioritize what's reasonable queue length for a customer to wait versus maybe what they're used to. Could be two different things. And where does the compliance go? And how important is that? Can we put off what?
Thank you.
All right, I'll jump in. On kind of on the staffing side of it, I'm glad to see that there's some other options that are kind of making some headway. I just wondered, as I was looking at it, are we, meetings were strict and did not bring any people on and bring some more training? But it sounded like that was kind of what we're looking at. We're bringing on some of the other staff and saying, okay, we'll bring you on as more of an entry level, but we recognize that your needs and help and assistance to get to a place where we can develop you to this, for this position or that. That's what's happening.
That is part of our strategy, but it is putting pressure on our senior staff, including. They don't have time to do your projects and train all the new people. It's pretty overwhelming. So we are looking at what we can contract, for example, and where that makes sense. But even contracting takes time from staff and, yep, everything in between, basically.
Are there any partnerships that we could? I mean, again, that also takes away staff time, but working with the, I know IBW specifically has a training program, but universities, Lake State College, have we had programs like that in the past? Or are there things that we could be partnering with them to do, to do that training and get people to a place where we hire them right off of that?
We do partner with them for internships. There's a number of internships that we offer that kind of at least lets us try them out and try us out. But I'll speak on the water, the school where we got a lot of our people from closed at LBCC, didn't make it through COVID, basically. And now there's only one school, Clackamas, and everybody competes, the students. So there may be opportunities in the future, but right now, there isn't a real desire on the school part to help us. So a lot of the utilities are looking at their own internship programs, figure out how we might raise somebody from the ground up.
We have LCC right here and they're doing some of that work and they're also re-envisioning what they're doing because they've had a loss, or not staff, but students. Do we just happen to have any web commissioners on? Okay, former web commissioner. Oh, Frank?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that there's, you know, from a staffing perspective, I think that this is, this is wide enough and deep enough that the organization is going to have to look at this separately from a near-term tactical response approach, which is where you look at plugging your gaps. But ultimately, we have to look at this as how do we organically grow talent or create the pool, I'll say the farm club, for that talent. And so this is not an issue that's going to be solved by us, you know, by, by going out in the next few months and trying to plug some holes. We're going to have to do that where we can and prioritize, but we're going to have to look at this as, as maybe a more strategic issue to the point that Commissioner McCray brought up earlier, relative to the strategic plan. If you look at really strong organizations, they develop a workforce strategy. And I think that we And I think that we, as an industry, not just EWEB, we as an industry have to look at it that way. And it's going to, it's going to have to be something that we invest in and build a foundation for. So that's something that we're starting to put together a kind of a, I'll, I'll call it an assessment of the workforce, which includes not just EWEB, but the sort of external pieces to that. So you'll see some plugging of gaps here and there, but ultimately this is going to be something that's going to take a bit longer from an industry perspective, including EWEB. I, I did want to also weigh in on Commissioner Schlossberg's question around AMI. There's a number of strategic components that have to come together for us to be able to start to synchronize supply and demand and provide products and services for customers that on both the water and the electric side, AMI was a piece of that. The, the hardware part, the deployment part did, I'll, I'll say, put us about a year and a half behind. I, I think probably two years on, on that particular element. A real important date and a timeframe for pulling together and launching new products and services is probably going to be in the 2026 kind of timeframe. So that means E E S, that means our understanding of data and means understanding of resources around IRPs. You know, including AMI, I think if those pieces come together in the 25, 26 kind of timeframe, we'll still be within the, the window that's going to be effective for the strategic plan, just to give you a little bit of timeframe feedback. Thank you, President Carson.
I had two other quick, I noticed in the cyber, in the briefing that was related to cyber information, there was an incident. I just wondered if anybody else thought that there might be time there to talk to staff and have staff come and tell us more about the robust protocols we're using in more of a secure, you know, environment. Obviously, it's not something I want to dive into right now while we're online, but maybe in more of an executive session. There are others that were interested in that, especially based on situation that came up. Anyone had none?
I would defer to staff. They think it's at the level that we should be informed because there's a decision, there's a recommendation that needs to be made. That's fine. But I know what I don't know and that's pretty highly technical stuff. And we've read what it said and they think that we, we would benefit from that time expenditure on workforce, but if not, a lot of things on the agenda.
Thoughts, Deb thoughts?
We're, we're prepared to provide any kind of information and background and details. Brown's point, I'm not fair at this point to say what would rise to the board. Is that, other than again, we have staff shortage there and in the cyber department. So, and in I S as well as having trouble. Folks, so again, it's kind of Frank's points, getting strategic, our, the, the idea of updating strategic plan with D E I elements is we reach a wider pool of that. So choice for more.
And I mean, my only thought on is that I've been in the organization for fifteen years. I don't think we've had kind of a robust like this. And maybe that's for the best. Maybe we don't need to know. But also it's one of our bigger risk points too. So it seems like something that we should just have an idea about.
We could provide a background or response that provides a little more depth to us behind some of this, to how, what we're doing.
That's something that we can do based on like online. So it's more of a confidential document because again, I don't want to expose us to anything.
You don't need some. It would be.
Okay, sorry. All right, that, that's it on that one then. And then my last, on the emergency water station. You know, I, I did do a kind of a quick the envelope calculation if we, for Howard, for example, there were 32,000 reported by that one location. And if we had, you know, roughly 16 spigots on it, as it were, I mean, we're looking at, for 10 hours. That's one every three minutes that you got to fill. And I don't know about any of you, but visiting the schools in the morning gets to drop off is challenging. And so when I look at that and every time I go out in the community, I talk about, you know, we're doing system where we have these areas where people can come and gather water. And that's it? Like you don't have enough? There's, how can you bring in that many people and get the flow through? So I just, it, it gave me a little bit of pause and that, that was why, I don't know if there's anything else that in the plan that we work with the city and other agencies, and it's already outlined. If there are other distribution sites where water gets put out and we have those identified ahead of time, so that other agencies are, you know, airlifting it in or, you know, however we get water in. Map ahead of time, or yes, you can refill jugs here, but here are also other stations where we plan, you know, to work with other agencies. And we can send out a flyer of sorts that people can have on our wall. Maybe that would help with the distribution of it. So anyway, it's just something that if we plan ahead for it and everybody knows, then when it comes, you know, everybody knows that that's where they go. Our last comment. Okay. We also have thoughts on that. Strategic planner for.
So one of the questions that I had was when you were talking about the capital budgets for this upcoming year, you mentioned that water was going to be over budgeted by nine or whatever, seven event. And electricals or vice versa. I guess my question is, one, where does that extra money come from? Is it stuff that was budgeted? I mean, you mentioned on the electric side, some of the stuff was budgeted in a two-year cycle and you're, you know, it's, it's happening upfront. But what are the, the other ones? Are we planning on that coming out of reserves? Are we planning on that taking away projects that are in the key, in the multi-year financial plan as far as the, the C I P? Is that something that we have to think about when we're, we're looking at a redesign? This I can see, you know, if it's a one-year thing, you'd see it, but from the way that you guys were talking about supply chains and all these things, these pressures that are on our, on our capital plan, I don't see that those are going to be going away. I think every year we're going to see it may not be as significant, but there's going to be significant cost overruns. And so I'm just wondering, how are we planning for that?
There's, there's two elements you mentioned there. One's the long-term financial plan with the 10-year capital plan. So Karen and her folks are really going through that right now and updating for supply chains and schedules and then all these kinds of things. Then it drops into finance. The other piece is talking about it's like this year, right? So towards the end of the year, then Deb and, and teams are, are answer working through here. So they, they, they know pretty much what's coming. And so they're also shifting and adjusting for the end of the year, maybe transfer. Didn't say too much, but there's a, just an adjustment made at the end of the year to either take reserves or adjust other things, move capital depending on the mix of things going on.
Did you want to say anything?
Did I want to say anything? Yes, Rod is right that the finance team does stay in contact with the operations folks building so that we're aware of where they're going to be at, at year end. And we were aware that we have pressures this year, actually when we looked at what we needed to borrow. So that was a piece of what you see in that bar as well. We still have now, you know, you do not know my numbers. We still have more conservative assumptions about inflation in the capital plan in coming years. And we're you know, I'll say it back and forth. It's an iterative process with Karen's team right now. So we'll have more in July.
And then again, the, I, I noticed that we were on Bertelson and thinking of our capacity in that area. I know one of the, and we do have a good relationships working with the city of Eugene. One of the things that the city is, has put into their C I P is building infrastructure out to the industrial areas on Clear Lake Road. And I'm just wondering, are we, are we kind of in correspondence with them? They're, they're in the next few years are planning on putting water and sewer out there to hopefully get those large sites developed. I would hate to have them throw a bunch of money into economic development sites and not have us be able to service them. Are we on, on board with them as far as the infrastructure needs for the Clear Lake Road area?
There's a couple of things. There's long-term plans that both Wally and either do in engineering that account for those things and how to position themselves for that. And research and correct their position for that. And we do have monthly meetings with the planning department that raise your hand. So, oh, yeah, yes, the mic's not on. But we do have monthly meetings too with city folks, planners and engineers to those, there's concurrents kind of things. So there's regular communications going on. So really nothing is, is too much of a surprise.
Right. That's good to hear.
Good.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski, I, I was going to say if, if you deal with capital intensive industries like we're in, there will always be ebbs and flows in the inflationary pressures that, that you see. One of the, the biggest, I mean, we, we have to work within the constraints of the budgetary targets that we've set forth in the long-term financial plan. I, I think if we start to vary significantly from that, our customers bear the brunt of that and we all realize how important affordability is as, as well as reliability in, in their, in their value set. One of the biggest pieces of the pie that we have both on the water and the electric side is what's called risk-based. And risk-based projects are the ones that you can flex when you're trying to deal with in other constraints, including, including budgetary constraints, including constraints that may be driven by outside influences like the city, for example. The other flex that we have is we do have a capital reserve and, and the finances flow in and out of that capital reserve, which tends to buffer things within a year or two. Those are sized based roughly on the depreciate, the annual depreciation level. So there's some flex points there. But, you know, we're, we're going to have to take a hard look at capital, work within the constraints that we have. On the water side, you, you mentioned it. I mean, we pulled some projects in. We accelerated those and that caused something in one year, but we'll have to be able to adjust and flex in, in the, in the other years. This is, this is a long-term, you know, part of our business model. And, and we have to be able to work within the constraints that you set as a board that we're trying to achieve for our customers and then be able to make operational adjustments and financial adjustments accordingly over time. So, yeah, the, the, the risk base was defined that way very specifically so that we could turn that dial up and down based on some of these external drivers.
Just one comment. Thanks for the, the report. This is always super helpful. Thanks for the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, we have the evaluation process for manager. How we asked to put this on just to make sure that if anybody wanted to have changes that from the process that we went through, then this was the time to do that. So Frank would have the opportunity to know what that process would look like next year. And if there aren't any changes, then we all have consented that this is the process we would like to. Do you have any thoughts or updates they'd like to suggest?
I think I've raised this in the past and like us to consider the possibility of having the folks who directly report to Frank, provide us anonymous feedback on their experience with some. I think, I think that'd be valuable. I know Frank, my understanding is that they provide that to you in, in some format already, some feedback for you. But I think it could be valuable for us as a board to understand where Frank's direct reports, you know, their experience with, with his work.
Yeah, Commissioner McCray, in, in the past, I, I can speak for the, the, the executive team, my direct reports. They, they have felt like their feedback is more useful to come to me directly as opposed to the board. In fact, they've, when we've, we've opened up that opportunity to the board, they have felt rather uncomfortable about it. Now, I don't, it, it, it isn't something I'm, that I'm against. But I think they have felt like their feedback was better to come to me directly. They thought that was more useful. But, but again, I, I, I can see lots of different methods. I'm just giving you a little feedback as to why it doesn't exist now. It's not because it wasn't offered. It was because the executive team didn't feel like that was their best method of, of getting me to change my ways, I, I guess. To, to, to put it that way. So, but over time, that I will also say that even through my number of years, there's, there's been probably three or four different approaches that have been used by the board. You know, and the most recent one was actually a result of the contract change that took place, which started to incorporate some of the, the market adjustments as opposed to the board setting the market adjustments. It was, it was set by the market. So, but if that's something that the board would like me to explore very directly as an assignment with the executive team and my direct reports, I'd be happy to do that and follow up with the board directly on that, on that particular request, if you'd like.
I do want to add on that in the past, we have had conversations where we've had the executive team come and Frank is not in the room and then here. So it's really not anonymous information either. It's it almost, I don't know, felt like if you say anything and you're tattling in front of your other, you know, it's, 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 that's a very awkward way to do it. And I would never recommend doing it that way in the future. If we were going to do anything where maybe just providing the opportunity, if there was feedback that the executive team didn't feel comfortable providing directly, then that opportunity could be shared with us. But other than that, because not everybody feels that way. Maybe they do, but I also know that staff will say something, one thing to your face and then do something else. Not that you are, not that you're not a wonderful leader, Frank, but things do happen. Anyway. Don Brown.
So there, there's nothing preventing staff from coming to us now anonymously, is there? Can you do that? Just send me an email.
That's not anonymous.
Certainly is. I'll show you how to do it. But there's, they, they can be anonymous and contacted, make a phone call or do whatever they want. Send me a letter. There's, I, I don't see anything, you know, I have anonymous feedback like that. Then if it creates a situation where there's an allegation or something to that, then what? You're in H R.
Not looking for allegations, just looking for performance feedback and thoughts about to help us understand and evaluate Frank because we don't have that experience of being that.
Now, I've been through five of these reviews and they're all really weird and uncomfortable and awkward, I think. And I just think it's, it's hard to figure out what the right process is. But there must be something out there that's best practices for boards like ours. And I'm just curious if we could find out what other boards like ours do, how they do performance reviews? Because somebody else must have figured out a good way to do it. So anyway, I would just be interested in getting information about what like elected bodies that don't work directly with the person that they're evaluating, how they go about doing.
Well, for me, I mean, the only employee we have is Frank. Any, when I'm looking to do a performance evaluation, any kind of information that, the more information that I can get leads me to make better decisions is, is my feeling. Now, how we get that information, I think goes, goes to what Mindy's saying, is there, is there a better way? You know, I've been, I've been involved with boards, not elected boards, but boards where there is a executive or a but boards where there is a executive or a small subgroup that meets with, with staff. So it's not a quorum, so it's like two members of us. They go and then, and then in executive session, those people to go to what they've learned from the, you know, from their digging in to the whole, to the whole. I don't know if that's a way to go forward with it. But I guess I'm, I'm fine with moving forward. I think we've got a, a very competent and a very good general manager. My concern is, is that that may not always be the case. And being able to find that out early on. I, I would hate to have a, a thing where we're not getting feedback that we, that could help us find problems and identify problems and rectify them early on when we've, when, when there isn't that form of information going forward. So again, I don't have the answer to this, but I, my goal is always as much information as I can have to make a decision is where I like to lean, lean into.
President Carlson, could I weigh, weigh in? Yeah, I, I, I think in, in many ways, the, the only mech, I'll say not the only, the, the primary mechanism that the board has for oversight is through the unity of control of the general manager. And so that relationship is, is incredibly important. It's, it's written in policy that way, as well as your approval of strategic plans and budgets. I mean, that's, that's really the, the authority of the board is, is primarily through the general manager in, in how those other approvals take place. I will, I will say that, that there are a number of different mechanisms used across both public and private sector for evaluating the chief executive. Those do vary quite a bit, whether you're talking about a public organization or a private one, to, to Commissioner Barofsky's point. And, and quite honestly, I think some of that gets designed for the worst of possible outcomes, which is, I think, where, you know, what the, what the board wants to be able to get visibility into. And I, and I think that's, that's appropriate. I can work with our HR staff and, and look at some other options to bring back to the board that will help facilitate more information for the board. And I think that's, that's very appropriate. And so, yeah, I think, I think that, that, you know, providing feedback on, you know, the general manager of, of which, you know, I report to, or whoever's in this spot reports to all of you is, is a good thing. Now, in return, I get to evaluate each of you. No, I'm just kidding. But yeah, I, I think that we can work on something that, for the board's consideration going forward and that, that not just has to do with the performance of the organization, but the, the leadership of the chief executive in that role.
And then one last thing is, I mean, I alluded to if we had a different general manager and things were different, we're a very functional board. If we am dysfunctional board and we've got somebody that the general manager pissed off and is, is throwing spears in his evaluation, you know, that's, that's another thing to think about. I mean, I know of a, a board too far from here that is having situations with their general manager. And, and so that's the other side of that coin is if we can set something up that is, that is bulletproof.
I, I will, President Carlson, it, I, I guess I will take this as a, as an action item that the board would like to find ways to close the loop on the general manager that don't presently exist in the, in the most recent methodology. And I'll, I'll talk to my colleagues and I'll talk to our HR staff to, to see how we can supplement. Does that, does that sound like a, a good action item coming out of this?
I'm getting headshots here, yes.
Frank.
Sounds like we wrap up the discussion on that one then?
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to future board agendas. So one of the items up that we want to discuss is the format for the Upriver meeting. And Rod, are you, or if I can throw it a little bit since I asked for it to be added?
Yeah, I was gonna mention that. One of the things I'll, I'll just point out, we have a lot of things already in motion and a lot of, of the paperwork and work and staff time has gone into what's there. So major changes are gonna be challenging. You know, tweaks are, are welcome, or maybe a little item, something like that. But as, as you, I know there's things under consideration too, but.
The one item that I wanted to bring up specifically was that there was a request for us to each have a slide for when we do our presentation. I just wanted to gauge if others felt comfortable with that or if that felt like overkill. That, that was it. So if everybody likes that idea, keep it in.
After listening to you at, at our agenda setting thing, I went, I went back and forth. It's, it's like, do I want to have my life story on a big slide behind me? You know?
It just tend to feel like it's.
I mean, I don't know. You know, I, I, I like to do that more in a, in a verbal form than a, than a slideshow, but I can go either way as well.
It's just a slide, right? And we just introduce ourselves. Yeah. I think it's a great thing that kind of humanizes us a little bit just to let people know who we are.
I like the introduction part. The part that gave me pause was putting a big slide up there because for me, going up there, this is not us, I'm not, I'm not a grandstander sort of person. I'm there to listen to them. I want to hear their feedback. I'm there to answer questions and, you know, have that personal touch, which, you know, we get verbally. It's just, I don't know, for some reason, the slide thing made it seem formal. But if nobody else has that calm, I'm completely fine and willing to let that go.
I share your sentiment. I, I don't want it to be about me. That's where you're getting, it's a little awkward. But also, you know, if the team feels like that's an inappropriate thing and helpful for the meeting. They've been looking at me for 16 years. We just wish you could get an opinion out of you, John.
It seems like three, three of us are uncomfortable with the slide, so that's enough. So I say then.
Thank you. I, we still will do introductions. We absolutely should do the verbal introduction piece. Commissioner gets a couple of minutes, but we just have one welcome slide. And I know that the one slide that they typically put up with kind of our areas, that's helpful to have, but, you know, yeah, showcase slide for each of us. Thank you. Okay.
President Carlson, I have.
Yes.
One other item on the new agenda was the June 14th work session. After listening to some of the feedback in the notes from our previous work session, the over-recommending, instead of what we talked about previously, was we'll just spend that work session on a, on a training session, sort of a DEI 101. It's, it's kind of how we're framing it, but with some of the, the suggestions that were brought up and incorporated. And then that a future work session or board session will bring a more half, I mean, a completely baked kind of policy, similar to what we did with Resiliency tonight, then that between that time and the training and some, we'll give some other options to follow-up training. Hopefully then we can have a good discussion about the, the policy that we drafted. So rather than trying to cram two things in, the June 14th will be mostly just a training session. It'll be an interactive kind of thing. We're working on the agenda right now. And so I'll give some more details. So I'll hand those to Frank to, to, to show on the one of those.
Will that be an open meeting online?
Still working on the format a little bit on that. It'll definitely be a different kind of setting. We're in profitably, there's some ideas that we have been talking to. Yeah, I would just, again, that we do that at least offline. I mean, it might be an open public meeting for the public intent, but I think having a recorded video and audio doesn't support our candid, vulnerable kind of questions and conversation.
President Carlson, I, I, I do know that because of COVID, the public records laws did change and meetings that are held with a quorum of the board do need to offer an electronic version for public access as well as in-person. It doesn't mean we have to record it, but it does mean that we have to broadcast it at the time. And so there, there is a public records law that, that is presently in play that, that does not, I mean, it, it specifically states that it needs to be offered in an electronic media format.
Can I propose executive session then, as long as we're not making decisions?
There are various, there's a very specific list that you can use for executive sessions and that is not on the list, Commissioner McCray.
It seems like it's, it's more like a training and meeting. I mean, I, I don't know what the guidelines are around that, but every, everything, when there's a quorum, even if it's not a meeting, have to be.
Now, when, when you are even training of which something can influence a future decision, it, it is considered a, a, a public meeting. It, it is not the equivalent of going to a basketball game or having a dinner. It, it does fall into the, at least the present way that we are interpreting that into the public records laws that way. So, you know, we, we would be pushing the edge of the envelope if we, if we didn't do it that way, unfortunately. So I hate to be the bearer of bad news. I have been in Washington DC, so I'm in the greatest of moods. But it seems like it's going to, barring something new that we learn, it, it will have to be offered as a, a public meeting.
We do, we do informational briefings from staff on 2-on-ones.
Yes, less a quorum that, yeah, less, less a quorum, we can do that.
I wonder if that training piece could be done. It's not ideal.
You know, it's part of our job. We're elected officials, part of our duty to be open and transparent with. I think the, not, not having a recording of it so it lives in posterity would be helpful, but if there's people that want to tune in, you know?
I think, I think there's, to your point, there's some advantages to having an open session. Those advantages allow for transparency and, and take away the opportunity for somebody to say you're being misled or, or something that, you know, that's something, you know, and really influencing some different way. And so that, that is a different way to look at it as well. Somebody give me an example of what would be said if we didn't publicize the meeting versus if we did? Just give me a topic or a generalization of how by restricting the exposure of this meeting content, I mean, I just, I'm lost, so help me.
Well, somebody might ask for clarification on the definition of something that might make them feel ignorant for not knowing the answer.
I already know I'm ignorant. I mean, I already know this, this whole topic is gonna be.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about me.
Okay.
I might want to ask a question for a definition of something that maybe I should understand that I don't. And now it's out in the public that I don't understand what trans means. I don't, I don't know. So, but that's the idea is that it would allow us to ask questions that might be uncomfortable if we know everybody's, especially if it's recorded. It just makes for a more candid conversation.
No, I, I get that because I'm, I'm totally lost. I mean, you get a little guy like me, but I'm trying to stay up. I'm trying to be respectful and, and try and understand it. But, yeah, so I've got another rule before I can break them. And, and so once I'm told the rule or what the expectations are, then, then I'm okay with trying to adhere to it, be respectful. And if I don't want to, I don't have to.
Yeah, Commissioners, I, yeah, I, I do understand this was not the request or the desire of the board. It, it is the, the statutory requirement that we have. Unfortunately, we don't have to record it, but we do have to offer it via electronic media when there's a, a quorum and a, a meeting of the board, even if that's for training. So, you know, I, unfortunately, I have to report that to the board in, in this way. But that's the statutory requirement that we have, given that we're a public entity.
I'm, I'm gonna just throw out there that because we're a very functional board, we're very respectful of one another, but we're in a good place to do this work in a public way to inspire others to take this step. I know that that's going to be uncomfortable for all of us, but being open and transparent about all of it and understanding that, hey, this isn't uncomfortable because we don't know it all, but we're willing and, and trying to learn. Having it recorded and just acknowledging that and asking for the public's, you know, mediance with us. And, hey, hopefully this will inspire other organizations that are grappling with these topics to take that step too. Play devil's advocate to the conversation. Silence. It's okay.
I certainly can do it in public. Like, we're totally capable and I completely agree, very respectful board. I just don't think we'll probably have as deep a conversation as we could otherwise, that's all. Like, if we have to do it in public, that's how it is and we'll just, that's the conversation we'll have.
And I'm just gonna keep saying this over and over. Can we sit closer together?
We're a little closer this time. We're very winged. We don't want to go out once, Mindy.
So, so for me, again, I'm, I'm in the, in the ignorant camp here, right? But the outcomes that I want to get out of this is that we aren't uncomfortable saying these things. That's the whole idea behind the DEI policy, is that we can say things from a, from a space of knowledge and not from a space of ignorance. And so if I say something that sounds ignorant in a training session, that is the absolutely appropriate space for me to say it so that I could, so that I can learn from it and know that that was not the right mindset to be having to, to go down to a true DEI thing. And if we're the ones that are setting this policy, that's where we've got to get to. It can't be, I don't want to say it, so I'm not gonna say it. That doesn't do us any good, at least in my understanding of the goal that we're trying to achieve. So I, I, you've got to put it out there. And, and we're a policy-setting body. And if we can't put it out there to help guide the policy, what good is that policy gonna be?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the vulnerability this, this puts people at. This is not greenhouse gas numbers and these are, these are the people's rights, right? The safety and the community culture kind of things. For affordability and, and reliability and, and environment, you know, those are kind of the, your kind of science. of science number kind of things. And so when we're talking about the people things like this, there's some vulnerable situations because we all come in at different levels, right? So, and we recognize that and we spent a couple hours talking about the session training and all that and understand everybody's starting point. So hopefully we'll give enough materials ahead of time too, that there'll be some more comfort coming into it. We could talk about the space even and how important the space is and maybe not using laptops, just, you know, there's different ways that they can help manage some of those kinds of things.
I'm also willing to, to the extent possible, have our questions or think about some of that ahead of time because I've been through a couple of these trainings and maybe ask some of those questions that are more vulnerable that maybe others wouldn't feel comfortable asking. So to try to get that out there so it's not, you know, attributed to any one person, oh, I can't believe so-and-so said this. You know, let's do that work and try to get it out there in that way. If there's anything that's particular question or things that you'd like to dive into more that I'm willing to leave that piece on.
Thank you.
So I think we need, we need some thoughts then on, so it sounds like we won't have computers. We can do the broadcasting from the, just the one camera and there's a desire to not have it recorded or take the other step of having it recorded, but having it be just on the one camera. Just want to make sure we're giving staff appropriate direction.
We've got another board meeting, actually two, right? Got Upriver and then we've got the June.
Upriver, we're not going to talk about.
I know, but.
President Carlson, I believe we have enough guidance at this point that, but I would suggest that this is going to be, because it's a group discussion, we'll have a group broadcast such as you recommended. So we'll, I think if we need any further guidance, we do have one opportunity between now and then to gather more information as well as our one-on-one sessions. So we'll reach out if we need anything more.
All right. And I'm going to ponder over the record versus not record question too, because there's part of me that feel like it would be good to inspire others, but I don't want to limit our conversation. Okay. Thank you for that. And anything else on future board agendas? You want a board wrap-up?
I'm sure that we will have a large turnout of our Upriver meeting and that we will talk about questions about them first, just so you know, I'm hearing a lot about Mrs. Bridge.
We have many answers on that, so just going to change our topic maybe.
I just have a question about protocol, having been through a rather long series of well-attended Upriver meetings, for lack of a better term. Who's going to keep the clock and who's going to keep the gavel? We're going to give them two minutes or three?
Well, we have the clock there or shall I bring my?
It's been passed, we haven't brought the timer, but that doesn't, I mean, that's entirely up to this board. Is there an ending time for the meeting or is it until everybody who wants to has spoken or how does, how does that work? Please put a count on theirs. That's what I was. Is the full agenda? It says 30-plus minutes.
President Carlson, you know, if the board should desire this, we could break up the meeting into a, an area of formal discussion and have a time limit on that. And then there could be an informal period of time after that, which I think is how we set it up. The goal was to provide interaction and the opportunity for commissioners to have conversation and answer questions. But if the board wanted to put an outside, you know, boundary backstop around that, that could be done.
It's like roughly an hour of formal presentation and conversation is what is roughly on the schedule. And then there's 30 minutes before that of, sorry, there's 30 minutes of the presentation and then there's an hour after that. Okay, do we have a desire? So that's, it's 5:30 to 6:00. I mean, I think we've typically been up there until, what, 7:30?
It may go a little longer than that. But may I ask a couple of those, just from experience point, is that you may want to have a protocol online in case somebody doesn't want to give up the podium until we answer or whatever, and it becomes that, that point where you just gabble the meeting out, take attendance recess or whatever. And then the other thing I would think that you may want to consider is talking points for us because I, you know, I don't want to get in the corner and have somebody said, well, Brown said that we'd be guaranteed access and we don't have to use Goodpastor Bridge or what. I mean, I don't want to make sure that in casual conversation, if you misinterpreted, misread or, you know, and then labeled with us later because it just creates more animosity down the road. I want to keep this peaceful and so we can hear them and so I don't want to give back, you know, because I don't have any information. I just got to listen to what your concerns are, but just make sure that we have some talking points that would help us out when we have some already, but if staff wants to give us more, the things that keep us in a good relationship with the Upriver people, I think that would be helpful.
As far as the timing of public comment or, you know, the thing, maybe what we say is, you know, we've got 50 minutes for public comment. We're going to allow you guys two minutes apiece, which gives us 40 people. If somebody's already said, kind of like what they do at the City of Eugene at their public. If somebody's already said what you said, you can try and keep it short. I don't know, that might be a way. And we can always, you know, if we get to the end and there's three people that haven't spoken, you know, we can extend it or something like that. But if we set a parameter at the beginning, that gives them an idea and I don't know what that is.
A little bit different with this format because there's been more of a back and forth conversation where they, you know, get up and say something and then we may respond and then that takes a few minutes. So it's not just a recording sort of conversation, but, I mean, we can try to gauge the room and see how it's going and if there's more want, you know, we can ask, I can kind of look around and get head nods, should we keep going? Should we stop it here? I mean, at some point we need to, we need to wrap it and get to the next phase, but there is, there is also the opportunity to really, if I'm calling on people, to spread it around the room to make sure that each person who wants to talk is giving it, so it's not one person just.
President Carlson, I was just going to, yeah, I can hold my thought.
I was going to say, I had already sent Frank a list of questions and topics that people had sent me that they wanted addressed, so I know that he brought that onto staff. But I do think that in the short 10-minute presentation on Leeburg that happens before the UNA, just to make sure that we address like the, like three main things that people are going to have questions about so that when people do ask questions, they're not asking about the same topic over and over. So the bridge, that's going to be number one, the park, number two, and I can't remember what one of the other ones were on my list, but just to make sure that that is included right up front, like these are the things we know, these are the things that we don't know, these are your concerns, just so that other people get a chance to ask questions and it's not just singularly focused on popular topics.
Okay, and Frank?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to point out that the format of this is a little bit different. We are, we are going to the Upriver community. It is designed to be a little bit more interactive, but I'm also going to suggest that it's okay to have a specific end time. And part of that is we have 12 other open meetings a year that anyone can come and provide their opinions on. And so this is, this is a special meeting that we do for 3% of our, of our customer base and we are going to them to talk and listen to their issues. But it's not necessarily, there's also some boundaries to put on that as well because they do have lots of opportunities to interact with this board. And I know all of you listen intently to the feedback and answer questions from them throughout the year. We will, and there's been a lot of outreach, you know, 20-plus meetings on this topic alone and we will get you some further study materials prior to that meeting as part of your board packet. Thank you.
I like the idea of having end time. I also like how you phrased it of, these are the concerns we've heard already and these are what we're working on or we don't know, because that, that does stop a lot of. Okay.
I have my meeting with the, my liaison meeting with the Mackenzie Watershed Council next Thursday, so I can ask them what, if they have any concerns and maybe ask them to give us a shout out too, because they've been very appreciative to what, asked of what EVO has done for the watershed over the years. Maybe we'll get some positive feedback at the microphone as well. Trust them.
Okay, well, I'll be prepared. We can just moderate it.
And you've got, everybody's got their hard hats, right? Did we all wear our construction hats?
One other item that I brought up during our meeting was, do we want to have the watershed investment portion be first or do we want to end with that one and start with Leeburg? The only reason I brought that up is that we've done a lot of work on the Mackenzie and I would hope that people are appreciative of the work up there and it might soften some of the other conversation around Leeburg, but maybe not. Maybe it's better to just flow right into it. It was just an idea.
And we had the, you want your sweet bite or your savory bite first? You want the sweet bite last? So that's the, going into your, so let me just thought, dessert last is best.
All right. No strong opinions, we can legitimize this. All right. Thank you, everyone. I think that's it then. And we are, yeah, we have board wrap-up. So does anybody have anything on board wrap-up? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, hey, Rod, thank you.